All right, we'll go ahead and get started then. If you don't find, we make the motion to pass the minutes from January 10th. Does everybody have a chance to review those? No questions?
I would move to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of January 10th, 2024. And anybody care if I put Board of Finance in there with that same?
I was gonna ask.
Okay, together with the meetings from the Board of Finance meeting from January 10th as well.
Seconded by Chris.
Okay, anybody opposed? Wait, no, did I say all in favor first?
Yes.
All in favor, aye. Opposed? Perfect, it passes. For anyone that has a question about that, I did make a sticky note for myself today. So hopefully this round will be a little bit better. Next, we have some new business by Mike.
Yeah, so there's a few things that, as you all know, Joe has moved on to a new position, which opened after his position opened. And in reviewing, getting that right to post and advertise, there were some things I noticed that I wanted to change. First was the job title. Job title that Joe had was Youth Services Librarian. And to those in the library, that makes sense. But advertising outsiders, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. It doesn't indicate or mean that there's any supervisory responsibilities with it. So the broad term librarian was just didn't really fit, in my opinion. Plus the fact that since we don't require an MLS degree to have someone that doesn't have an MLS degree, it may have the title of librarian to fit right either. So I am opposed that we move to change it to Head of Youth Services and make that change through all the departments. So each supervisor of the department would be the Head of Circulation, Head of Tech Services.
All right, do we need?
Is that a policy piece you'd like in there to change the wording of?
I don't think there's anywhere policy. There, I mean, it's in our, it's just in the job description is where you sign it.
Sure, I would move to change the job descriptions for supervisory staff to head of their respective departments.
Mark the second.
That is great.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Perfect, passes.
The other item that's tied to that is job status. The, so exempt or not exempt as far as pay and when it comes to overtime. On the job description, they were listed as exempt, but that's not how we've been treating it. We've been treating it as our lead person with all that with that. So I want to actually treat them like they are in a job description as a salary exempt employee, mostly because it will help with last minute coverage issues. So currently now, if someone has an emergency and has called off and resourced, the head of that department is then trying to adjust their schedule later on in the week and whatnot. If it's a Saturday or Friday, then it becomes impossible to avoid overtime to make that happen. So this would just make it easier on those rare occasions when there's an issue. They would still average 40 hours a week. It's not very changed their work schedule, just allows more flexibility.
And no overtime.
And no overtime.
And those are all supervisory positions, so they're legitimate exempt positions, correct?
Correct.
Did you go, like, when did that start or occur? Did you see that part? Because I thought that was around COVID or right after COVID. I think we moved something like that.
I, all I could find in documentation was that the job description says exempt, but in practice, they have been treated as hourly employees. I didn't see any documentation anywhere where that was changed officially.
Chris, do you have a recollection of that meeting?
I thought we had a staffing concern shortly after COVID and everything. I thought we did.
It is possible.
Yeah, but I don't remember me changing anything in the wording or anything like that.
I feel like I remember that too. It was almost because we were in a staffing crisis. We had lost certain staff members due to reasons and others couldn't make it here, so we had to...
Well, there was more than just a few hours here or there. It was, yeah, it was a substantial increase. That's why we didn't want to change policy or change the hours of that. But if, yeah, if they're okay with that, we're good with that.
Yeah, that's my question. Are we paying out of basement over time?
No.
We're not.
Okay, so. We're avoiding overtime.
So money is going to our window to do that?
Yeah, it won't materially affect there.
No.
I don't want to count it on us.
Nobody's counting on that money.
Right. Is the, the other thing that goes along with that is, you know, it's kind of a respectable point of we're struggling to attract talent because of the pay rates that we're in. Is that extra flexibility on our end going to push away current people or prospective people? I don't think that's it.
I'm giving, I can reach out to anyone that had any kind of supervisory, current salary. And not just hours.
Was it, was there any writing in there that it was up to the discretion of the director? That was needed to be used? Because I think that was what we had talked about, if I remember correctly.
Not like, and I couldn't mess up with it. There's a lot of stuff to.
You don't read that.
I would never generate.
Well, the reason why I would ask is if there was a situation where somebody was five or six hours more because of people calling off, I wouldn't have a problem with that part of it because, I mean, that's above and beyond what was, even though it does say exempt for salary employees. So I wouldn't mind putting something like that into the discretion of the director if this is agreed just or a lot of hours. I wouldn't mind that. Because like you said, I don't want to scare away people if we're gonna say this is it. We can make you work 60 hours a week. That's, that's not.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just want to make sure we're fair to.
Yeah.
The salaries that we're paying are frankly low, so we have to make sure we retain the people we need to retain.
Exactly. And in, in most cases, I can't think of anywhere, he wouldn't flex their hours following week or something like that. It's just, for instance, this just happened where a Friday, the other day, a day, a super library was already having an app at their 40. And then all of a sudden, we were trying to figure out what to do and how to cover a short shift because someone had an emergency. Yeah, so.
Do you just flex it in with the next week then or something like that?
Can't.
With overexempt, with, if they're exempt, I think you can do that. If you're hourly, I don't think you can make you that at all.
Right, but it, it does say they're exempt.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've just not operated such that, so they're not exempt.
Yeah, and they, they didn't, when I asked them, they did not know that they were on the job description, that they were listed as exempt. They all just thought they were hourly, so.
With those cadenas, do I hear a motion?
I will move that we authorize the director to sync the job descriptions that are called exempt with the method in which they are compensated.
Director's second.
Director's second, all right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now, is that a two for one? Did we talk about both there? The titles and the status? Yes. Oh, okay, okay. All right, so then now we're talking about job status.
No, we talked about titles and we did.
Yeah, okay.
Then we go down to.
Okay, everybody's divided. Does anybody remember if we got motions to pass both of those?
Yes.
Okay, next up, bylaws.
Yeah, per, and yes, actually, we are to review the Board of Trustees' bylaws, I think on a three-year basis, every three years. I wasn't sure when the last time it was done, so I sent it out to you guys to review and see if that was good. If you just change the one to change anything or to go with what we have.
Did everybody get a chance to review it? Are there any questions?
This is the same one we had. I didn't see any adjustments or changes to it, so.
I thought it was very interesting that it mentioned the Robert's Rules of Order. I had never heard of that before, so it's a little machine. Oh, it is. Then it's all as much as like a submarine. So I think that we follow it pretty well. I was pretty pleased, so.
Mark and I have decided that we could get into a lot more arguments. When you get people that are really into parliamentary procedure, it can get, it can get cumbersome. And so I think we have a nice balance. I think we do, we do a fine job.
Our life is up in high school.
Because knowing which, which ones are always, always available.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I suppose we could note on the minutes that we conducted the review, but I don't know that, anyway, he's moved.
It's not changed.
I just had a suggestion or at least something to contemplate in Article 7 under Fiscal Affairs. We outline the other funds that we have that are invested at the community foundation, and I wondered if perhaps we shouldn't include something in here about the Julius Snodgrass Fund?
Yeah, there's no bad idea.
Is that probably?
Section 4.
Yeah, because they're not listed as.
Yeah.
Separately, but adjacent to, I wonder if it makes sense to club an expiration date on this or have it in the policy? It's every three years, right? So should we just amend this document to actually store the date on there somewhere?
Yeah.
This one does say review.
Yeah, on the bottom, it does.
It does, it doesn't, it doesn't say a revision date, it does say using.
My, my, my. So apparently they don't show footage.
Well, so are we talking about in Article 7 to add a section 4?
Add a section 4 for the Julius Snodgrass one?
And just note that it, because that one was, we were given real broad discretion.
Yeah.
Is that a motion or? Well, that's just one change. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I didn't have anything else. I just, I wanted to put that out there for your consideration because we probably were endowed that gift after the last time we reviewed.
Is it, is it maintained in a separate fund? I think that makes sense.
Yeah, because we do talk about it in our, our Board of Finance meeting.
Well, I, I agree, we'll move to delineate or to create a new section 4 under Article 7, identifying the Julius Snodgrass Fund and identifying its permitted uses.
I didn't like that.
Discussion wise, I remember when we had to have a reset on the Simon JP bodybook. It was being used reasons it wasn't supposed to be.
Yes, because it actually had some limitations.
It did have limitations, so.
Doesn't it make sense to just have as the policy that any new funds that we start up have to be delineated in this particular document so that we don't run into issues where we have to go back to the family to have?
Well, I don't know, because once that fund is, is used, it would need to come off.
Yeah.
I think every three years we review it and put more on it.
That's a good enough review cycle.
I think so.
So we just have a policy, a, was that, so Lori did technically second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, have those cadenas.
Excellent.
Good.
All right, any other one?
So.
Ooh, slides, PowerPoint.
So the wonderful document I sent was the full document, and it was a lot of digest.
He was a doozy.
So I pulled out some small pieces of it, and you have some of you printed.
Chilton's Department version.
Thank you so much. Classic comics illustrated. So, so what do we, the slide rate accomplished 2023. So we now have 6,355 users, and that is significant for a couple of reasons. One, last year, we got rid of fines. With that, all outstanding accounts that were only on our, in our system because they had a fine holding onto them were able to go away. So the fact that we, and you will see it later in the trends, the fact that we still have so many and we're really trending upward says a lot, that people are still, are coming out, we're getting devoid into the doors. As we like, we like to have, we'd like to have larger portion of the population, but we're headed that way, so. And you can see the breakdown, breakdowns of those basketballs from our residents. We do have some paid users. Our student teacher cards, we have 243, which is huge, considering we just started out this last year as well. 45 simple baros, that's really good. That's the ones with Trebusco, which we just started November, I think. So, and then the seven staff that don't live in town, you have cards, and then you have 30 plaque, which with so many evergreen libraries, it's surprising we have any plaque.
Yeah, what are they?
So those, so the plaque is a state-run process where it's a public library access card, so you pay money and then you can go anywhere in the state and use a public library and get a card then.
Oh.
So you don't have, so it's, you still have to pay something, but it's not as much as a, our, our non-resident fee, but you have to have a library card already. So I can go to Southern Indiana and get a card, pay the small amount for a plaque card and have access and not pay the non-resident.
That's really interesting. I didn't know that could happen.
Next, we have our circulation. Circulated 219,000 physical items and over 43, over 43,000 e-materials. So that's stuff through Hulu and Mattoo, Kupla, and Libby and Canopy and all that stuff. The largest part, part of that is our books again, which is a great thing, but you also see that our other, so the long game, the equipment and those type of things is basically right along with our DVDs and CDs and media stuff. So we're getting a lot of use out of our equipment and our library things, which is.
This is gonna be a weird question.
Yes.
Books, the media and other are all, are those all considered physical items?
Yes.
Okay, so what are the balance of the physical items that accounted for this 219?
So.
Because these two, these would add up to about 850.
So one book can circulate 40 times.
Oh, okay.
Those are different.
Check that time.
Yeah, so we had 101 items.
Oh, that was the circulation.
Circulated.
This is the inventory.
Yes.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, the number of items it circulated.
I got it.
So these are the number, okay, that's not the number of items in our collection, it's the number of items that actually were circulated at these points.
But the step I said is the item, are the items in the collection or these are the just the numbers?
That's the total circulation that went out.
Yes, so.
So basically, every item went out roughly two times and it went out at all every day?
Yeah, average.
Average. Is that clarified?
Program types. We had 940 in-person programs in the building. 202, where we went to another location, whether that be the Y or preschool or elementary school or something like that. And 344 virtual programs, which is huge for a library of our size and staff.
And those are programs like the staff ran, organized, everything? That's not like somebody came and rented the room and played on?
Correct, that has nothing to do with any of those rooms used from outside sources.
Like a go-sen?
Yeah. And of those, the largest attendants were children. Teams are, are good showing, we love to see that hired. We're working on trying to get that higher and then the adults.
Have you met any teens?
That's what I'm saying. He has, he has teens.
I have two teens in the house.
What, what age do the teens become? Is it 18 they become on the adult markers or?
Out of high school.
Out of high school, okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, is it starting, starting at 13 for purposes? 12.
Yeah.
So. The, so our, our, our annual report for the state feeds into the national statistics and reports, and they, they break it out as 0, 5, 6 to 11, and then 12 to 18. So good, good attendance. You can see some of the ones, the programs we did, and lots of storytimes and crafts and playdates and legos, Dutch and Dragons for the teens and study how arts and crafts and writing, writers group. So we are doing a lot of great programming, a lot of reaching a lot of people. Our goal is again, obviously, to do better and do more this year, so.
I assume these are all in-person programs that are physically at the library or are these inclusive of outreach?
This includes some like the outreach and the virtual stuff. Got it. And so for virtual ones, we can only count, you know, the devices that attach. We don't know if there would be 40 people sitting in that room watching our, our, our tour of bring the national art we were giving, so. Patron interactions, we had 7,980 computer sessions. That's community members coming in, meeting our computers upstairs. We answered 7,888 questions, and those reference questions are in-depth questions. They're not directional or where, you know, what's the phone number for this or that? It's, these are, I need help doing this, I need to figure it out that, those type of things. And then we had over 40,000 connections to our Wi-Fi. So even those individuals that are coming in and not using our, computers are still using our free Wi-Fi, which justifies the expense we did last year in updating our equipment and expanding our service. And then trends, we talked about the first one was the number of patrons and how it's declined, but again, every three years, if there's no use and there are no, nothing outstanding in the fines, they are, they are purged from the system. So the fact that we are, we had a decline, but we're now trending upward a little, it's a good thing.
Is that a huge dip from 2015 to 2016, where we might have implemented that policy or not, just the current policy?
No, because I don't know. I, I just pulled the numbers. I, there was no note on the old annual report why there was such a dip. I don't know historically if there's anything that happened at that time to see that. It could have been change in service area, I don't know. I don't know when, because I know some of the township, there's changes in townships. I don't know when that happened.
That's, that was, that was long before that. Okay, Chris, right?
Yes.
I think, I'm trying to think.
No, they were all on the rules on three years ago, I'm not sure.
That might, that might be people that.
You, that's actually, a few years ago, they got to the place, and I don't know if this was a statewide requirement or a policy, but that they, you had to come in and renew your library records regularly. And I don't think we used to have to do that in the same, the same way. I mean, that's.
So maybe that's what it.
And I'm wondering if that wasn't, because I remember that recently, it seems like I've done that like every three years or every two or?
There, there was a, also a time when the, and the door counters out front, and they were malfunctioning.
Forgot about the door counters.
I thought that was 2020 though, because that wasn't my time.
Oh, no, that's, I mean, we've replaced them a couple of times.
Oh.
But this one was off the.
Yeah, this is.
Cars, yeah.
Well, and that's why I'm thinking that may have been, when you said something about a purge cycle, like, oh, if that, if that whole prior trend was counting everybody who ever had a library card, whether they were dead or alive or still living.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, they started renewing them, that might account for that. And I don't remember when that was that they started doing that, staff member, like.
Well, regardless, seeing that turnaround is awesome.
What was going on 2017, 18, 19 that was really hitting the people in the door? Like 20,000 more people?
So.
What, what was that attributed to?
I, I just, in talking to staff, they just had a lot, a lot of people just coming to stuff. They had, if you see the, the number of programs has not changed much.
Yeah.
But the attendance was just skyrocketing. And then COVID happened, and we're, we're on the upward trend now, which is good.
Right.
But we're still not back to even 2014 levels, but yeah, something at that time here, they were just, you were heading to something.
Yes, we were really reaching somehow.
Yeah.
And I will.
Could that be door malfunction?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly what that was, but we had talked about that.
Most of our attendance, at least now, is done heading out, like either registration or, and, and the meeting, so it's not relying on the door.
Yeah, that 2019 almost seems like an outlier, and it's such a strange number.
Yeah, this, oh, well.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Circulation didn't really spike.
That, that's it, I mean, I'm not, I, I dropped out of statistics because I hated it, but.
Thank you for your question.
There are certain statistical outliers that you're like, okay, I'm gonna question whether or not that's really a true data point.
Is that noise or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it, it could have been a reporting error. I, I don't know, because I just pulled the numbers off from prior reports.
I remember very specifically, because I joined the board in 2020. And one of the original discussions that we had when I first joined was the variance between the door counters and what staff were actually counting. It was like 10,000 difference.
That's.
Over time, you're going through the year.
Yeah, so I bet you it has nothing to do with our, our.
Door counter.
Door counting.
Door counting.
Yeah, because circulation looks fairly on trend and attendance is just crazy, so I kind of wonder if that. If memory serves me well.
We're trending up again.
Yeah.
Yes.
In the near histories, that's good.
Yeah.
Really, all three of these charts are going in the right direction this year.
Yes.
This is awesome.
And I also, this is a, a, I did the same thing in a.
Oh, stop.
To land upstairs for people to.
Was it the house that they did the graphic design?
I did all this.
Look at you, creative.
Wow, so creative.
I'm impressed.
Way to be a Superman.
Not often I get eight flexed up.
What do you mean? We're not, what?
Any other questions about board, board in general or overall, the annual purchasing?
Looks good. Do we need to pass that? Do we need any motion or no?
I know there's something you have to sign before I submit it, and I will, I could grab it on my own file for the official.
Devils.
That's bad.
Yeah.
Official online.
I'd be loving, thank you. I'd be happy to sign. All right, we're supposed to move into the director's report.
So I don't have anything else. I think I've uncovered the one thing. I know in the systems report, we mentioned the website. Our goal is to go live last week. We ran into issues with, and we had like three different vendors looking at it, trying to figure out why it wouldn't replace the current. They think they have a solution, and hopefully, if all goes well, it will be the new site we liked on.
Wow.
So that, that's the hope.
Okay.
But we were on pace until we had the last snag of actually making it live to, to go, go forward with the website. Any other questions about the department reports? Can I answer or?
I've been curious where we have the Joe's position.
So it is posted. We have gotten very few, like five applicants, and only one of those has any library experience. And many of them don't have, don't have supervisory experience at all. It's unfortunate.
Anybody with an MLS?
Not yet. Trying to remember. That, that position does require. It does not require, but, uh, the one that does have library experience, uh, has a lot of library experience. So she may have an MLS.
I, I can remember, but do we have any potential candidate candidates that could boost in a prior, at a lower position thing?
No. Uh, there were, there was some talk, but as of yet they have not applied.
Okay.
I, I reached out to colleagues I know and said, hey, I hope, uh, and so hopefully we will find the right candidate, uh, here soon. But one of the worst things about hiring for libraries is the lack of understanding of what we actually do in the library. Because often you find, people find, think, uh, I want to work in the library because I love to read and it's quiet and, and I, 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 I love the atmosphere.
But atmosphere's great.
Then come to the library, don't work at the library.
The atmosphere's great, but we don't get to sit around and read all day. And there's a lot of, you know, public service, uh, skills that you have to have. There's, you know.
Especially for the supervisory position.
There's budgeting, there's, uh, graphic design and stuff, all the kinds of things.
Exactly.
All kinds of things that you don't think about when you're applying. You see a library job, think you're gonna go in. Love, not a lot of people think that, oh, it's a nice, quiet place. Yeah, I love going out. I love, it's my library. That's great. The agent, the user, the, something still pretty capable there.
How long do you think we should hold it out before we have to reevaluate the position description or the salary requirements of it?
Uh. It, it will re, I am willing to go as long as needed, whether I'm filled, rather than hire someone that's wrong. As far as revising the description and, and requirements, like that, probably four weeks at least.
How long has it been posted?
Uh.
Three.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Any other questions? Any questions?
All right, we're moving to planes. Planes were normally on page thirty. This is twenty-six.
Yeah.
Twenty-six is.
Great.
Yes, it is. Okay.
Proving planes is exactly.
I have a couple quick questions, I guess. I'll second so that we can go away.
Oh.
Just for seconds.
Okay. Questions?
Uh, we have a couple of stickable things. I'm not sure what they were. Crazy, you might know.
Well, no, I, no.
As the guy could have a look. Uh, we had fourteen hundred dollars in furniture in Amazon capital.
Oh, uh, office chairs.
Okay.
Uh, we, we bought some last year. Others were, uh, back ordered. Uh, and then they, they didn't, never, we stopped. We had to find new ones, but they were just getting good chairs for our staff.
Got it. Uh, and then we had a twenty thousand dollar item for nanotapes from Midwest.
That is, uh, the one that, uh, is that, that's an annual?
Yeah. And I saw seven hundred and forty-four dollars for a hot box from T-Mobile, the new hot box. Or is that just a recurring, that will be actually monthly?
That is our, yeah, that's our monthly charge for the twenty-five.
Okay. I never noticed. Uh, and then the last one is thirty-four hundred dollars for heating and air conditioning repair. Was any of that serious? On page five.
Number eighty-four.
Yeah, eighty-four.
Nothing serious. Um, but I don't recall. It might have just been normal maintenance.
Yeah. That's my, that's my hope.
Yeah. I mean, well, so as we talk.
Yeah, I'm asking this question with deep caution.
And as we mentioned that, the doors are open and have been open most of the day because our chiller will not reset like we wanted to. And so this one was getting really, really hot.
Yeah. Uh, and the thirty-two thousand dollars for the AME group, I assume that was one of the projects that we had talked about.
Yes.
Just finishing up here.
Uh, the, the heating and, uh, it was from, yeah, it's a renewal of our, our maintenance agreement.
Okay. And what was the question about AME? Uh, two lines down. We just had a twenty-two thousand dollar payment for them.
That was a, we, uh, uh, our agreement that we initially issued. They, we, we realized after the fact that we had forgotten to, both them and us, forgotten to do maintenance on one of our, some of our equipment. So this was updating that contract to, to that service to maintain, maintain our network and everything.
Okay.
And it's for a year. And the hope is after a year, we'll be able to, uh, pare down because we won't have as much service space or something like that is actually coming.
Is that in our budget for the year or is that for us all?
That's in our budget.
That's all I have.
Great, you have a quizz for Brown.
Nope, I was just going to shock you with, uh, calling the question, calling the previous question, actually, Mr. Mr. Parker will, will, that's actually, that's actually from Robert's rules. That's actually how you call for a vote.
And that motion is always in order.
Yes.
No, I'm serious.
We, we never say things. That, that's, that's actually how I call for a vote, but if there's more discussion, that's fine. We usually do it when discussion closes.
I was gonna say that on page twenty-four, that good news, bad news, I mean, for our patrons and things, taxpayers, great that the bond is paid off.
Yes, yes.
Men is moving forward, two dollars per row. I mean, we are done with this. We should celebrate the heck out of that. Yeah, for a second, but yeah, moving forward, we need it. It's gonna cost us a lot more than that. Which, that's the unfortunate thing that you're riding on, but at least that is.
Lori doesn't feel sorry for paying for the rest.
I'm saying as a, as a, as a treasurer, that's where like it's, if we have another bond, it's gonna be much more expensive than that. And that's the scary part. So that's why you were talking about the chiller and things. I was like, oh.
My question was specifically related to this pay for the chillers, because it's gonna happen. They're just gonna have to figure out how to deal with it.
Yes, it is. No further questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. It passes. And we don't have to make any motion to adjourn anymore. So that could be it. Is there any other?
We don't have to, but it's fun.
Okay.
I'm moving to adjourn. Here's my Chris.
Chris, so moved.
Great second.
Second? Okay, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is. But don't anybody go anywhere, she gotta sign the papers. That's right.
I, I'm very, I actually am very impressed, especially the, uh.
Thank you.
Yep.
Little graphic, uh, graph, bar graph, the bar.
So my.
Thanks. Very, very cool.
My staff swear by a product called Canva. I want, I've never used it.
I did, I was using Canva last month.
And I, I use Canva, just saying.
Is that what you use there?
Here. I just.
You play the way.
Yeah. And I, especially.
Do you hate Canva?
I hate Canva.
Oh, wow.
Because I'm so used to, I mean, I got this for like.
Microsoft, right.
A couple of hours of PowerPoint or something like that I know.
Yeah, and Excel, just drag it over to the graph. They're not as fun looking as that.
It looks, everything looks right, so.
Yeah.
And then all of our state stuff will be finished.
Okay.
I didn't mean to touch on close to you, but to me that you wasn't feeling well. So I was like, let me get really close over here.
I had two high scores that came back today. It was their first day back. They're like, Mr. V, it's still, it's under a hundred. But I'm all hot in here today. I'm like, just sit by yourself. Sit by yourself.
Somebody's playing that song. Because I don't know where I'm at.
That's what I'm saying. Because we don't change. And they're gonna, I mean, I don't have to.
No, it was just, I got coughed like.
Most recent.
Yes, yes. I learned that, no worries.
I used to come down, hide, hide, I'd try to sleep. So I, I laid down and it was just normal.
Oh.
Oh, well, it is what it is. It's supposedly getting better.
Yay.
I'm, I'm, I'm not coughing this constantly, so, which is a very, very, um, they got back. But, no, I was just concerned that I was like contagious as all get out.
Wait all night, you know. And late, it was late that night to try and get home. So how long was it in church for? He went to church for a while, the next day, and then the next day, and then the next day, a week. And I was like, you doing okay? He's like, yeah, I guess. I'm sure you're all right. It's like, I don't, for the past month, I've, uh, I've been having, um, a, a lot of anxiety at night, but waking up with bloody noses and things. And I can't, I just, I can't sleep.
Oh.
Bloody, what the heck? He goes, I just can't, I don't know. If I'm in the military and I have to tell someone, they have to carry on a war that's gonna end someone else's life. I don't know if I can do that.
Yeah.
At least they have to feel the weight of it.
Right.
That's pretty mature perspective for a committee.
I can't, I can't do that.
Yeah.
I'm like, then don't.
Then don't?
And he's like, okay. Then the next day is like, I'm going to IU. And the kid's smiling again. He's happy.
Oh.
I'm like, holy cow, buddy, you were stressing that bad. Well, no worries.
Yeah.
He goes, I never thought I'd get it.
See what happens when you underestimate yourself.
My wife's not a villain, anybody. Except my wife's an IU villain, anybody.
Hey now, hey, 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 hey.
My wife, my wife has the best both worlds. She's been to blow with somebody from IU to read it to her. She never gets the humor to that.
That's amazing. I love it. I love that. Well, Jackson will be thrilled because he's a diehard, I'm keen to get him to be interested in going on a college visit anywhere else.
Cam's.
I'm like, what I need to do, he needs to.
He really does. He really does.
Their parents.
Because then.
I have a friend who's in the Bible. Bible program right there.
She's down there. So Andrew is, I have to be.
You're not an engineering student. No one in engineering, Purdue.
No, we're going, I'm going home and making chicken.
A hundred percent. I'm an engineer. I think it looks like a circuit board. I love it. It's easy to follow. I would go down to IU and weld it with that. It's like, I hate this campus. It's a pretty flawed campus.
Yes, it is. We're really gorgeous. Yes. And that's heart is from limestone.
Go over here.
That'll lay a bunch of bricks down.
Like, at least that thing says.
You don't, you don't have to skate in this IU Purdue game.
IU's was over here, it's over that one.
So you don't have to skate in this IU Purdue.
Has fountain.
My dad's on the career, but.
Yes.
You're not studying engineering, so that's fine.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, I don't know. I, I've tried to get him excited to think about going somewhere else, but they've gone to IU soccer camp. They're, you know, we have that, I lived in the dorm experience. I loved it. I'm like.
I wasn't getting up every morning or, or well, three days a week when it was.
And he likes Southern Indiana. I mean, he's an out, he's an outdoorsy guy. So like Brown County and all those. I'm from Dumb Room, that area. So, and Matt and I are alumni. So we're not like discouraging it, but at the same time, I'm kinda like, don't throw all your eggs in the water. That's where I wanna go. That's what I wanna do.
There's a lot of different tools. And then one weekend it's like, cause Sam was like, really, I like Notre Dame. So we were on the campus in Notre Dame. But he's like, I just don't know if I fit in at Notre Dame.
Yeah.
I guess that. It's like that's the, the one guy, when we were on our, our tour, the tour guide, his Louis Vuitton belt that he was wearing and stuff. And I was like, Sam was, I don't know, but these are my people. I don't think these are my people.
Yeah.
I've interviewed a lot of startups over the last month and a half. My startups got purchased, so I'm like in the market for my next one. And they're all East Coast, Harvard, Yale, or Notre Dame. A lot of Notre Dame ones. And Notre Dame ones, the people were, every time I'd be, I'm like, I don't think I want to be in your business. You, it's not the vibe I'm looking for.
Yeah.
So I just talk to them a lot.
Yeah.
Smart people, a lot of them are that.
Yeah.
It's the difference. Well, that's what he said. He goes, well, Mendoza School or Kelly, the average salary from the Mendoza School graduates is a hundred and eighty thousand a year, starting out. Can't shake a stick at that. That's, that's pretty, that's pretty good.
It's pretty good money.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
Sure. What else do you look at for it? That's one of them. That's true.
I mean, the only saving grace that Notre Dame really has is this new dog sat up there. I mean, come, let's, let's talk about it. If it was good enough for Snoop, it's not enough for you.
Call me at school, just to call me people that go to.
Right. Outside of Snoop's kid, right. Yeah.
All right, we'll see everybody next month.
Yeah. My spencer. And just think, next month when we leave this meeting, it might, maybe it'll be daylightish. Could be.